All right. This meeting is called to order. Uh, the other part of the public library. Our regular meeting for uh May. And I will call the role. Uh, Christie and Guley.
Present.
Christie, Dr. Virgin.
Present.
Justin Fong here. Trustee Ruth is here. We do have a forum and we will now move on to the uh maybe uh the approval of minutes. We have it as of our uh regular board meeting from April twenty third. Are there any uh changes or corrections? That anyone sees? Seeing hearing none, is there a motion to approve the meeting from April? So. Sarah, say it.
Say it.
Uh, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed say nay, they are approved. Next, we have our, the minutes from the uh board committee meeting on May sixteenth. Uh, just for note, uh, when it comes to committee meetings, uh, it is you, because you don't do a lot of committee meetings, it is acceptable to vote on the approval of the minutes of a committee meeting that you did not attend. Just uh, that has been a question in the past. So I, since we don't do it very often, I thought it would be for context, because I will be voting to approve them, but it was not there. Um, are there any? Better mind, do you see any corrections that need to be made? I mean, I see two of us for the committee meeting. I don't see if you had any corrections to us here.
Um. This is a minor note. It's a scale with regard to uh one, and I actually didn't notice four. One to four, and it's a rubric on five different elements and I think it's reasonably clear, but I'm not sure if that's fully clear to everyone based on
For the purposes of
Well, for the purposes of the
Minutes.
Minutes, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted it noted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. It will be noted.
Thank you.
We'll remove the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, none of those in favor of approving these minutes, say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. They are approved. Uh, public comment. I received your public comment in writing. Now, we have no public comment for this meeting. Trustee comments and calendar. Let's look at the calendar a little bit. Uh, Sunday is Day in Our Village. Boiler will help booth from eleven to four. I will probably come and be at the booth from noon to two. Suzie Lee told me that they're, they're well staffed. Um, with, with wider staff, so if your, if your calendar does not meet or you have our obligations, it is it is okay if you don't feel like the need to be there, but you are what uh trustees are about. If they
I will not be available, sorry.
It's just understandable, so. Um, so just uh, if you're gonna be um, if you're gonna be available or want to come during a time, half hour or whatever, um, just let uh Suzie and me know, so um. Yeah, pretty much. Then next week we have the conning. Um, and then June twenty fifth, I'll make their library board meeting.
Does it say do you have any special meetings assigned already or does it not?
Not, not finalized yet. I did set up a poll for um, to meet with uh vendors uh for the, for the search term. Uh, and we'll, and we can get to that when we, when we get down to um Tennessee.
And then do we, are we, there's nothing, there's been June forty two?
Yeah, well, we know June three that has been canceled by, or not stopped by the village. They are doing, um, I believe a community celebration um, on the fifteenth of June. Um, I'm, you know, they did ask for the book bike to come and but we're, you know, we plan so far ahead that we're already committed to like two bot parties that day. It was just kind of a little last minute, so we didn't decline participation this year, but said, you know, please keep in mind next year so we can plan ahead. But, you know, things were still until last week.
Yeah, that's a yeah, that is true. Um, but yeah, well, June team is on a Wednesday, which I think probably makes it, and, and it's still not as widely in the business world, uh, recognized holiday as some of the other, um, say like the fourth of July, uh, which will have upgraded. So I think that, that may have contributed to the life of a great this year, but that is the village's decision, not ours. Um, any trusting comments? About other items? And we will go into our interim good works.
Um, there's not much to report. Uh, just kind of keeping things going forward. I will say this month, we provided answers to the candidate questions for the RFP. Um, we received receipt of eight RFP submissions, so making sure that those folks have um were aware that there's that, you know, received and that we've been following up, and then we submitted reference checks for two candidates um for, at the direction of the committee.
How, what is? It's gonna say, what is eight? Like, is that a good number?
I think so.
I think so, yeah.
You don't understand what I mean in this context and not just generally is, you know, a good number. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think anywhere between like in my experience, between four and sixteen is a healthy number, and it shows that there's interest. It shows that there is a market that can support a certain amount of um diversity of proposals. I think once you get past sixteen, you have to question whether or not you've written your RFP so generally that like every Tom, Dick and Harry is just throwing out a bid. Um, and I felt that as a general, I, I read it some pretty deep, like they were, they were some strong bids. Um, and we did have really good discussion about like hey, these are the strengths, these are the weaknesses. We are suggesting to move forward. There were two that were kind of borderline. Um, and then there were, and, and so I felt like that's, you know, for, for strong, I, I don't know, wanna chime in.
Well, I'd like to, if we can put this on later for the and, and the new business under the executive director search form.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. I, it's fine, but I think I'd like to if we can get that in, you know, kind of a more cohesive part of that discussion at that time.
Sure.
Uh, I, I was happy to see Brandon comment. Uh, I was talking uh with some of the teachers up at Hatch one day after drop off. And I saw um Jennifer drop off the beads for the summer reading program. Uh, she was like, oh, and because we were riding on by the playground, she said, oh, it's all the way around to the front door. And is the, the school library and was one uh, was one of the teachers we were talking with, so it's nice to see that that is already, uh, they're already getting rolling a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
And getting that ready to go.
So if you kind of jump ahead and see um before we jump into our strategic priorities, we're reportedly ahead some things we wanted to highlight and wanted to jump like the one tab to give a brief presentation. Yeah, thank you. Do you guys wanna take it, stand over here by the mic? Need to have a seat.
Thank you so much for coming.
Of course. Thank you for letting us speak. It's such a wonderful program. I'm so glad you chose us to share and speak on behalf of the club. Um, let me introduce myself.
Sure.
Okay. I'm Zeymar Gration. I was a graduating senior at Krev's, and I was the former president of La Tab.
Um, yeah, and I'm Anna Balak. I'm a rising senior, and I'm going to be the upcoming president of the tab.
Um, La Tab stands for Leading Edge Teen Advisory Board, and the way we've chosen to display that in our community is through three key goals. Our first one being amplifying teen voices. So when we go out and do programs, we try to focus on what are these kids looking for? What are these teens in the teen space? What are they trying to advocate for? What do they wanna see more of? What are they going to wanna be involved with? Another one is um serving our community. So this year, what we chose to do was a service program. We went out to um what is it called? Beyond Hunger, and we did some service hours there with our group of about eight. And um, our last goal is going to be creating lasting programs. So this year, what we chose to do was create a program every month, which we called our monthly movie. So we'd have a theme based on like a holiday or an event in the month, and we would play a movie and have some sort of activity and snacks, obviously draw more kids in. Because if there's snacks, they're going to stay and wanna watch the movie, of course. Um, the way we found this most successful was advertising as early as possible, making it very normalized in the space. Even if they didn't realize it was us, La Tab. We would talk at the beginning, say, hey, this is a La Tab event, you know, if you enjoy this, or you would like to see something different. You're welcome to come into our meetings or come talk to us at the end. Try and make it a very collaborative event. And um, I think at some point, kids got very used to seeing us. They got very used to having that monthly movie to the point where it was the same group of kids every time they would come in, and they start to stay more and more and enjoy the movie and enjoy the snacks. And so stuff like that was really, really amazing to see, especially since I joined La Tab during COVID, and we had a really hard time getting getting like participants, getting people to come to our events, even when we had something where we wanted to have a um sanitary products drive, we did not get any engagement because, because then we had a lack of response. And so seeing it grow from almost no engagement to having regulars is really, really beautiful. Thank you.
Um, I just think all of the events that we've been like putting out recently have been really helpful because I also joined in COVID and um even just like going to volunteer at Non-Hunger, like with our regular team, um, was really helpful because during like our Zoom time, people would drop out or um, we would have like less members, and now we have like a very consistent amount of people who um, really wanna do the work, and I think it's really good.
And I think another thing that's really great about our group is we have a large variety of people. So we have people who before La Tab didn't wanna be in clubs. They didn't have activities outside of school. Ever so they would just go home because they didn't know what to do or they didn't want to do anything. And now because of La Tab, they're like, admittedly, I've joined more clubs. So one of them had joined like Model UN. So jumping from no clubs to La Tab and Model UN is a big jump for them. And so seeing them learn that engagement can be fun, and it can be interesting, and it's worthwhile, was really, really cool to see. And then we have people who are insanely committed. So I know people who are like spoken word captains. They're in a band. They have like sports teams they play on. They're like so much going on, and still they make time for La Tab, and they make sure in their schedules that they carve out that time to come to this club and to come to our events. And I think having both of those people engaged with our club was really, really cool, and it gave us a broader spectrum of kind of the people we're trying to amplify and the voices we're trying to raise.
I, I just wanna say, just hearing the two of you and the energy that you are bringing and sharing and the, and the clear pride that you have and the work that you have done really makes me feel good. Really makes me proud of the community that this library has fostered and the work that is done with youth. And I'm glad that you feel like you have a space here that, and that you can do this kind of relational work, this community building work here, and this really makes me really makes me happy.
Yeah, I'm really grateful for La Tab at least. And me personally, before like coming out of COVID and all that, maybe nervous to kind of I've always been a very like hands-on person. Let me go do something. Let me go help someone. But it made me nervous. I was like, I don't know if people want that help anymore. I don't know if they're gonna need it the same. So joining La Tab, a lot of people joined so many other like volunteer groups that at first I was like kind of if you do, but I was like, at the very least, I'll be there. I'll be a helping hand. I'll be a voice. I'll be something to help them guide them along in this process. And I think it was just so good to have like a group to fall back on. Like, obviously, coming years, we'd like to have more members, but even this year, having those consistent members, seeing the same people every time, not having to do the hi, my name is every single week made it really like, it was very, very community-based, and it was a lot easier to like run these programs and know who we're working with and know like where can we go from here? What have we done? What can we learn from it? Like, having a community here is just so like it's so foundationally strong that it helped, like, it makes you think that the future of attack can go anywhere. It can become any amount stronger because we have those because we have people that are so dedicated.
I mean, in contrast, um, I'm also a bit more of a quieter person, so um, as CEO knows. Um, so I feel like when I first joined the board, I was sort of more iffy towards like the community aspect of it for sure, but I think that has definitely helped me grow with being able to like communicate with people and communicate in those like group settings with a board, and then so just like for incoming teens who might be like freshmen this year, who might be socially awkward or nervous. Um, I think La Tab is a really great, great way for them to help like get some social skills and work on volunteering in sort of a safe environment.
Thank you.
DJ, if I post a picture?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, as you I think I'll get your permission first.
You guys have any questions about La Tab or anything else like that?
The leading edge uh team group.
Thank you.
So, and that's the best part, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm maybe this is just, I apologize. I didn't catch this about what was your uh, the, the size of your group fluctuate between?
Um, roughly, I would say between eight to ten.
Yeah.
Our most consistent group was eight. We would have students who would sometimes drop in, but had to drop out because of sports or wouldn't they'd be like, oh, I'm gonna come, and then it wouldn't come back. So of people who were like one hundred percent committed, had pretty much ninety-five or above attendance was eight.
That's pretty, that's pretty great, considering how fifty high school is.
Yeah.
Good, well, that's a good size for a group. Any thoughts about what we might be looking at doing next year? Are we gonna continue with the film? Idea, or are we gonna look at some other activities? Or even, have you even started with that? You're just trying to get to the end of the school.
I'm for sure. It's been a busy time. I think we're thinking about doing the films again because it's a really great, great way to like build that community. I think more volunteering because we just did our like first sort of like Beyond Hunger um volunteering recently, which I think was a good success. Um, and then I think also towards the beginning of the year, we're gonna do more like recruitment events um like in the space, just so that people who are in the space more often can get to know what it is and um, like generate more interest, so.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just jump out of order, everybody, I'm sitting there and then I got
Don't get those kids wrong.
You can talk a little bit about the strategic priorities.
Yeah.
Do you want us to continue talking?
Yeah.
Um, so we both have a couple of things we wanted to highlight in this report. Um, again, this is I think the fourth time we've done this report in the structure now, so I will say this was probably the easiest one for us to do. Uh, marrying this together was like very exciting for us. We will kind of get in the hang of it more. Um so book bike season kicked off in April. This has been ninety season of Pedaling Library Resources for the community. Um, in April, which is kind of a bubble month, because you never know how the weather is going to be. We hosted six successful events, more than ten hours in the community, um, more than two hundred patron interactions. We also got an additional bike. This was uh funded to the community foundation. And it's electric assist ebook, um, book bikes. So it was really exciting, and they're, they're hoping that this will help more people, more staff members get involved. Um, and then we did, we had a huge, uh, it's kind of crazy to think about that event because the solo clips, I can say it's in Starway now. But we had our circles, and it was really exciting. The energy here was definitely buzzing. I think we are good now for a while. I don't think it'll come back to this area. And so, well, the stars will be well done. Um, but we um, had a generous donation of our two hundred and fifty, or two thousand uh, clubs glasses from Seal, which is the solar eclipse activities for Latuarians community. Uh, the Star Library Network, Avon Planetary Room, and they were all we all wanna work together and host a human programming school. So um, I know some of you always might have been, I think Virginia was here, and it was crowded. It was really fun. And I love seeing people give away their glasses. They looked, and then they handed it off to somebody else who was looking for air, just the kind of community aspect. And then we hosted C Fest, which we talked about a little bit with the last meeting, right? This is one of your daughters. Came to uh, two hundred families and students, grades K through eight, visited the main library, two joint hands-on STEAM programs. Uh, district ninety-seven teachers, we had most of the activity stations. Um, so it was a very collaborative effort of the Education Foundation, but also present to show off what kids can do with Lego Minestorms. So it was a great event.
Like, if, if you were just telling that there were gonna be like two hundred families in the building at a time, at once, I would have thought it was something that didn't just chaos. I mean, and it was, there was definitely a, a high energy level that night, but it was definitely did not feel like I, if I had just thought it was two hundred family, you know, families with little kids with elementary schools kids in the building, I would have thought it was, because the staff and the teachers had it so handled and so well organized that it, it did not feel as chaotic as just saying two hundred families. Like, would, would, would inspire me to think that, that's like it's like, it was just so low, it was so low down by everyone involved.
Thank you.
It was really just different matters.
Great. Um, so we got April seventh with National Library Week. Um, patrons were invited to stop in by a library love note station. Um, those notes reflected via poster boards at each library location and on social media. For everyone to enjoy, and the communications team created a scrapbook of all of those notes um, that we can keep, and it was really awesome to take care how much this community left the library. Uh, our members of our collections and bibliographic team are completing an online class inclusive description for cultural heritage materials, and that focuses on inclusive and anti-racist metadata creation um, for our multicultural collection. And then um, to improve our service of Spanish-speaking patrons, we partnered with Triton College offering an eight-week onsite Spanish course for twelve library staff members. Um, and by providing an introduction to the basics of conversation in Spanish, um, what we hope is we can um increase our uh customer service and build relationships with our Spanish-speaking community.
Any questions? What do you mean by you say metadata?
Um, so metadata um kind of roughly is like um cataloging. Like, you've got your subject headings, you've got your description, and so with the multicultural collection, we wanna make sure we're using the appropriate terminology um, in describing the objects. Also, because they are um, reality, they're three D objects, they're not a book. That requires specific subject headings and different metadata tags. And so the thing with like we need to refresh ourselves, because right now, we're, we're entering that push of like going through, checking all of the cataloging, your multicultural collection, seeing if we need to add or change the description in preparation for making that available in the library catalog again.
Yeah, I'm thinking like in the data, like in my brain, it's a data privacy, so I'm like, wait, what, why? We always are creating metadata, like, thank you, appreciate the clarity.
I love the, the conversational Spanish. Uh, my, my office is doing something similar with a lot of the frontline staff. Um, is doing um Spanish, conversational Spanish related to what we do at our office, so I know that this is kind of creating additional accessibility for many, many people. Um and, you know, and, and, and the staff as well, you know, I, I know that, I know some of our staff downtown feels a lot more comfortable going into you know, but we will be is a much busier season for some of our offices, um, especially recorded deeds as park houses start to turn over more and stuff like that, there're gonna be, there's gonna be more people able to interact with the public who speak Spanish than before, and that makes it easier, you know, or workload easier for those before who, you know, two, only two people who do it, they had to do all of that, and now it is, it is much more evenly distributed, so that makes, and makes it also more accessible to the public, so it's nice. And the other of the website, how I wish your office did that. That's like, our, our website is awful.
So can I ask the eight weeks, they're done? Well, for the eight weeks, the Spanish conversational Spanish, is that completed?
It is completed. I, I I think just because there was like a little graduation photo, and I know they had some food here, and we give a flowers, I am pretty sure it is completed.
No, cool.
Um, but I think it was intensive. One of my staff members reported saying like it was it was like being in a, like a hard class. He'd call on you and ask you to say something, and it's hard, and it was frustrating in the wrong ways. But yeah, they have all seen it.
And staff enjoyed it. They really enjoyed it.
So they staff who had some background in Spanish and were kind of improving that, or were the staff who had not had any background in Spanish, just curious.
I, I don't know, but I, it's like a wide variety of staff from like different service areas, different levels.
Right, yeah. No, I mean, I think there were some people who just had a, like, then only had French as a background, so I think they really did wanna learn some of that Spanish to help out, you know, like our stipulation may have served other wanting that.
That's what I was wondering, that Ethan services. I did Latin and French, really as well. I've always wanted to, to take Spanish, so just curious about it. It's not bad. It worked.
You know, our library has mango.
Depends how, Kobe is free time, and you're cool.
I will look into that.
I too, in high school as well. It did, didn't do well that last one, we
But you went to a Catholic high school, so it was
I did. No. I would say that's, I'm spelling did it, but I, I still, I'm English did improve. Um, we started sophomore, dealing with stalker after a lot of
Yeah.
We're simply not subsides. Any important terminal loss? Uh, we have like core statistics.
I want to say I was very excited about the art history classes.
Oh, yeah.
That would be very happy.
Oh, when you mentioned the, oh, sorry.
Good, not going. Oh, no, um, I think that was like the second or third time we've done that. I do love it. Yeah, they keep me tuned out every semester, so.
Oh, I love that. That's wonderful.
That's good.
Totally on my topic. Well, I love that this mentioned the um, the electric bike is here, physically here now?
Yeah, it'll be at the Day in Our Village. Uh, I believe the original bike is the paperback writer, and they are having a maiden contest just Um, but you can apply face. I guess it just, it didn't come, took a while.
So when you said they had a naming competition, are, are, are having one clearly meant to derail the board, so we could just spend twenty minutes trying to figure out what are winning?
Well, we wait, who judge that?
I don't know.
Production staff. It does, it's a whole class.
Yeah.
But uh, that was on the name, the naming, I remember that, the naming of the, when we did the naming competition for the first one years ago, like the submissions were hysterical. Some of them were just, you know there was, there was a bubble. There was, I like, I like the paperback writer one, but it, there was a, there was one or two, like Hemmy Way, Poms, and there and uh, Frank Lloyd Wright as well, and then, you know, various other book things, but it was just it was, it was, it was fun watching, because it was all a lot of people we worked. You know, it was
Another one bites the tongue.
Out in the, out in the dinner, didn't make her talking all the ways.
They, they, they own the votes.
This is very the electric, so we have to get
I know, I think you need, you know, the zippy or something. I know, I think it'd be probably zippy or something.
Is what it's happening in the village.
Yes, it'll be on display in the lobby and the um one with the pop-up shop, which is going to put a fire. Yeah, so that's Sunday, you know, neighbors, and it'll be inside the main library.
That's right. That's a man.
That's the um that was the plan. Yeah, but then these are some of the items they have. But you know, so okay, we're village, so we'll be inside the building.
Always. Um so I feel like maybe it was last month or the month before when we were talking about the um the usage data that we see, there being some, do you remember having this conversation about what instead of showing month to month to show it like previous?
Also seeing year to year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um because I'm just, you know, like I I I'm I'm trying, most of it seems about the same except except with the program.
Exactly.
So I'm just, you know, which is, uh I'm first of all, I'm trying to figure out how um building visits stays about the same, but the program attendance skyrocketed, you know, uh which is just sort of a logic puzzle. But I I was wondering, I guess, what happened in April?
Yeah, and we we do have some answers to that. Um there were more programs in April, a hundred and forty-five compared to the previous ones. So ninety-three in January, a hundred and ten in February, and a hundred in March. Um one very high attendance event in April. Do you remember what I said?
Fifteen, was it fifteen?
The solar eclipse.
Oh.
So um which had an attendance log of over twenty-seven hundred people because we helped hand it out. And that was, that's a really good question. I was like, do I have the data to answer this?
That that that's quite the outlaw. I mean, that jumps out actually.
Yeah, so you're not getting that door now. Uh and then there were five other programs with a hundred plus attendance, including the STEAM Fest, both for eco extravaganza, the Natural Era Heritage Month Celebration, the one and fourth Film Festival, and the scavenging hunt activities for the jungle.
The one or the general capital pretty good turnout on that. So that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Thank you. You were ready.
I was. Well, that's a good question. It's a good trick question. Does member attendance is up and building attendance, what's the quality?
Right. Because it was outside.
Then we can go on to additions and terminations reports. Expected. And staff changes. There's some questions. We can move on to the financial reports. And just sorry. I didn't know that Green Day will definitely have their parking. It was a plan. It was felt like a water.
Oh, it's still the one May.
It is.
Yeah.
Any questions on the report for the dispersment resolution? Didn't I think there was one thing that was best I saw today that I said, oh, I was looking over again, but it's clearly so important that I remembered to write it down very.
I have a question about the art fund. Um and what are there ways to to increase our funds, first of all? Um and then are there plans currently to um purchase any more?
Um so at the moment, no plans to purchase any new art. Um what we did last year was bring the art collection under um the manager and curator of Special Collections, Kathleen Spail. Um so she's kind of been going through documentation about the art collection, what we have, the appraisals. Um we've been going through and kind of marking uh pieces that need conservation um or repair. And so that's kind of where we left it. Um we have some ideas about about things we do, like, you know, a virtual tour of our art pieces or things like that. Um but we've kind of kind of put that on hold until the new ED comes and and get their thoughts on um what we can do with the art collection. But yeah, that that number has pretty much stayed. Like, we usually don't dip into that unless we have conservation needs.
Okay, thank you.
Sam, can I speak to that a little bit? Because I was on the committee, the genetic and what we will open the art. And we owe about thirty thousand dollars that's there in the in the art collection fund now.
But I'm sure there's two that's in there.
Because the last piece we bought was a piece from uh Maywood, this was that that March about five years ago. We've spent about several thousand dollars getting that and all those things, those kinds of things. And you know, the big question of the quarter million dollar piece that we have there and especially we have it in the library. But um it is, it's a moving collection. We had hoped to be able to have little QR codes on on the art so that people could look at them and then interview living artists who are still with us. And so that that kind of stopped after COVID, thinking about that in that way. But I I do think that we do want to continue our collection. And the big question for the Lord is um when we have a piece of art that is really, really valuable, um does it belong, you know, on the library? And of course, it's it's inspirational, but you know, that's it. That's a big question. Does, you know, does it fit it? And I and I agree with you. I think it's a question of, you know, does does a permanent art collection fit with the, you know, and and it's a it's a discussion worth having. It's, you know, what at what point does a permanent art collection fit within the mission of a public library? In the, in my mind, it makes it accessible to more people than a museum, than a chartered mission, more private collection, you know, that is never the same, you know, it's never going to see. On the flip side, we are carrying tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars in one piece, but tens of thousands of dollars in part. And there are there's ongoing costs with, you know, with the thing, I mean, the number, I I don't, I I I don't want, I we've probably spent more repairing the story in the hop and hobo than we probably paid for it in the first place. Just that it's such a fragile piece. Um this one piece is, that's the one of the whole spirit, right? That's what I'm thinking. Yeah. But it was a very useful sitting exercise to talk about our collection above the library. Because we had members of the community, we had members of staff, we had members of the trustee, and we talked about these kinds of issues. It's a it's a tremendous asset. But I I I know that other libraries, I actually, this is from the past, is I know that there are other libraries who have, I don't know, I can, who had bought our art before. I didn't, I didn't know this is a conversation that other libraries have as well, who purchased art for their public spaces. You know, and and if we buy more, where do we put? Is it, I don't want to see more. I I don't think that we're at the capacity, but at some point, we're gonna, it's like, we're gonna have so much that to really get something else in, we're probably going to have to let some go.
Yeah.
At some, um because there's always so much space for them to exist in this building. So that'll be a conversation we continue to have. But I think, I do think there's value.
We don't think it's awesome.
We think it would be good. So.
Enjoying the show.
I used to have to say, we've lost our our great father here.
It's just right now.
We have a.
Uh it's a great reason, but uh.
And you'll be stuck in the third going down.
Yeah.
Because I.
Oh, when you said it before, you didn't see it before.
I am not, I'm scared the other couch turns too.
It's it looks amazing. It's so at home there.
It does.
How many extra?
Sparkling water.
Sparkling water.
So I, yeah, I asked about the art because I think um one of the areas that could be uh looked into is queer art. Um that could be some improvements um in that area. And um yeah, and I just, I think there, I think there's an element, so I have a public library, I think. It's of normal communication, uh it's community, it's all the things that we that we stand for and the accessibility. I mean, the fact that there's, are the young people in this community get to see that they probably wouldn't. And then there's the way that they're used to. There's a huge, well, but there's a huge feat that that's not, they ash, they're just so fashionable.
Yeah.
They didn't use to, that they don't. So I think, I I personally, I'm more biased, and you know.
It would be fair, I think, but what?
I think four libraries.
I have four libraries and I have four parks.
I'm looking at it, but I think it's just like, why, when we have a discussion, I just want to make sure, like, we are having like a comprehensive discussion about it because I think there are, well, I don't necessarily agree with it. I do think there are legitimate concerns about a library full of massing of permanent art collection. And I I think there's value in us doing it, but I do think that there are people, you know, there's a rational argument against it.
Well, let me ask this, if you mind, what is, how do we, what is, where does the art fund come from? And how do we decide how it gets?
I know where it originated. It was the sale of uh bricks um out of the claws of my pipe. That was, that was the, that that was how it was. It those, that sale of those was specifically for the art fund, when the building opened. And it has been fed into some other ways over the years, uh some donations, um so you know, some targeted donations for the art fund, but I don't know that we really have the ample um to to amass money for it. Um usually it's kind of been like, I don't even know, and and it's been a while since we've even acquired a piece. And so the even the acquisition piece has varied over time, uh or who's the selection committee and and. Yeah.
Has there been, like, you brought up a great point, Suzanne, queer art, and I think of like, I I'm a big component of outsider art. Um like, full disclosure, as an art history major, I still have a lot of friends who teach art history, one of whom specifically does outsider art. And like the idea of the art is not necessarily just an isolation of female artists who are traditionally not included, African American, actually any minority, queer artists, non-binary, except, I guess, queer as anybody. And let me, if I, um if there has been a a a decision in terms of the curation and what quote are we are choosing to curate? Are we, are we, I I mean, there there is an argument where we wouldn't want to be in competition, right, with any museum? But then do we curate and create a collection that is specifically focused on artists who would not be part of that traditional oe- oeuvre that we find in the museum? Or is it that we have art that is associated with, like, book art? Like, I'm a, I love book art. I think it's really great. When I was at National Museum of Women in the Arts, there was a curator in their archives and libraries specifically on like book art. And that can have a very expansive, whether it's like actual manuscripts or whether or not it's, you know, inspired by the books, but there's a lot of different interpretations. So I I just was, I would, I'm interested in how and how uh those decisions move forward because while I can understand, there's the argument like, hey, we we don't, we want to make sure art is accessible. It's there. This is, this is a library, it's a place of learning, it is the foundations of our democracy, I want, what is. Um and I think that accessibility to art needs to be part of it. We don't want to compete with the MCA and the Art Institute or even the the folk art, right? But there is a really good argument that we we can foster a very specific, whether it's local old park, right, local park artists, so that somebody is creating an archive of those old park artists. Whether it's fostering an environment of inclusion of Chicago artists who are not necessarily people that you're going to see in galleries. And these are also, you know, price-wise, a little bit different to ensure. I always like that. Um but I just, I would like to s- I and if you already have, I apologize to, I apologize to staff if it's already come up with this different curation plan. But I think that's probably like a ten-year plan, maybe not a, you know, next month plan. But I would, I would, I would put that out there in terms of, in terms of something to to think about.
Definitely, yeah. Um that definitely goes back to, and that's something Kathleen and I have been working on, which is what is the original intention of the collection? Was it to purchase pieces that always stayed there? Or was it to cycle out pe- pieces? Maybe you you sell off a couple of pieces and you bring in new artists.
Right.
Um because when the building opened, these art pieces were from little-known artists who now have skyrocketed and they're they're infinitely known.
Yeah.
So that is the conversation that we need to have is, yes, it's wonderful. We have all these fantastic artists, but uh would we rather start to cycle those out so we can get new and upcoming artists, queer artists, local artists, and keep that art collection refreshed? Um and kind of at the library to be the place where you can display your artwork.
Right.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I love that. And I just.
Yeah, Matt, when when this building was built, there was also a group that decided which rotations to use throughout the library. And I would love to see what their um what the rationale was for why they chose Lewis Carroll and the the people that we have here. And maybe that needs to be refreshed or thought about. But I would love to know how that committee was going to work. And I think Matt, probably your dad would know, right? He, I mean, he might, but I didn't.
He might have know.
He might, he might have known and he might still have to pay for it if I know him. But I don't know. And can you imagine that putting together a committee in twenty twenty-four to decide what quotations to put in the new building?
Yeah.
It would be very different now than it was twenty fifty-five years.
And that's a lot of the reasons I think these things are so valuable, and particularly like the community issue is to help kind of offset some of the movement in community that has a lot of old buildings and a lot of reference to the past. I'm, you know, you look at frankly, writing is held up, Hemley is held up, but um Priscilla hasn't been as much. So like, how can we as a library with things like quotes and art kind of balance that out and stay current? And that's one of the things that's so lovely. I come here and work and look at all of them, you know, and I see young people hanging out and and, you know, having their after-school hours next to a, you know, amazing piece of art. And then, right, it's just like, that's such a positive experience that I think, um, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Then again, sorry to take us off my little rabbit hole. I just have been wondering about that every time I see.
Second floor down, which like there's kind of a rotation and stuff. It's really valuable.
Right. And then the exhibit is there. So I'm sorry for the the old rabbit hole. Every time I see that number, I'm like, that, you know, because that seems like somewhere that makes sense to get dollars that are not taxpayer dollars, you know? So just how does that link to the pop-up shop? Does it, you know, whatever? And again, you know, we'll be going into a new budget leadership and all of that, and new budget season and everything. But it's just something to think about. Because it makes me sad. It's a little.
That makes me think that's one, you've had, you know, two pieces have gone on loan. Two, one went to Atlanta. Um I can't remember, and then another one went somewhere else. Like, the the why they went once and another piece went another time. And it was just a fascinating thing, like they paid for, you know, all the security and the transport and everything that it went there. It's like nothing out of pocket for us. We just got to hang a little thing on. You know, all the security and the transport and everything that it went there, it's like nothing out of pocket for us, we just got to hang a little thing on the wall that said it's on loan, which. I actually kind of enjoyed the idea that like we get to hang on our wall on to the Atlanta Art Institute.
Yes.
That's kind of a cool thing to have, you know, for that, um. So, um, that being said, if we're ready, we can go on to the resolution of disbursements. Are there any questions? That begins on page twenty eight. And rolls through until. Page something, something, um thirty one.
Uh sorry, I actually have a question uh about the expenditure, do you mind if we back it up?
No, I'm good.
So I've been looking and I was just trying to figure out if I want to ask on a seventeen in class sixty two. Um and so I see that we're at total people expenses, we're at about thirty three percent. Which makes sense, seems on target. Um should we be worried that the equity and anti racism is al- already at fifty seven percent of this? Budget for the year, do we think that maybe the um so sort of programming, I I just sort of programming like the um.
I think both.
The um rest or the justice conference may have, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure.
I was expecting that that was going to be the big chunk of the budget.
Yeah, exactly, so that's what I'm asking is, so will be, we're going to be okay, like, uh are we on target, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask. Uh we have enough for the rest of the year, it's going at the same level.
We can have more of a practice session and the exhibit session.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Reimbursements.
Reimburse, the disbursements.
Disbursements.
Right.
Oh reimbursements.
So, uh if there are no questions, is there a motion to approve? So is there a second?
Second.
We would like to have a second, but about that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who vote same age, that is approved, thank you everyone, um. Uh additional reports, I go.
Did you meet some Saturday?
Anyone? Yes, you did, yes, yes, um. Just called that up, there were not a lot of, uh we did not have a number of people attending, um it was showing, so it was mostly. It was mostly around the table, um and let's see. If there's anything that kind of stands out, um. Oh, there was a lot of talk about um the pool, uh the at Reed, um. The they accepted a bid to do the dive, redo the diving well, um there won't be a diving, um there won't be a diving pool anymore, and this was kind of interesting. Um I didn't realize it, but it wasn't safe, it was actually too deep because there used to be three levels.
Mm hmm.
That was first built. And so I was like, how can that be safely, but it's too deep, then I'm in there, but. They have to let her go in for rescue, and there was times it's too deep to rescue people. So they're having to redo the pool there, um and.
A bit sized out.
Yeah, there was like a third level, um so now the dining will be all average length, and they're redoing the side and all of them. So.
No background in that diving well.
Did they?
Yeah, that, that, I'll get your scene.
Oh my god.
Yeah, I get your scene, and a background was built in that, in that diving well. It was the only like place in tri- in the Chicago area to do it. I, my, my classmates, my principal classmates, uh his dad, my girl's dad was the director of the Park and Kirk at the time. And so he got to be on set while they were doing all of them, and so my classmates, so he got to meet everybody there.
Wow, wow, look at you, you're like oak park guy, political royalty.
I think it's.
Suzanne, I have a question to buy about, um, I was speaking to um Janet Johnson last night, uh. And she said that she's concerned that in the upcoming election. Are we getting out of candidates, both the village and all of these things, is Igo looking at this?
Yes.
Trying to get people interested in running for office?
Yes, absolutely, that's one of the, one of the, the kind of, um, I think that's good. Event plans, but trying to figure out the best way to do it.
Hmm.
And we were talking about maybe doing more kind of online or on website, it'd be a that sort of outreach. Instead of putting all the energy into a physical event that is not very well attended, so there's some shifts on how that's going to be, but that's that's definitely a focus.
Good.
Absolutely, um we just didn't have enough people there to kind of discuss all of that, I think, um. And um the township manager, um good report about the new township manager, um pleased with what he's doing internally and externally. Um and he sends a uh the board a brief of how the week has gone, um every week, so that they don't have surprises. Not totally. Sorry, I'm making eye contact. But I thought that was interesting, you know, there weren't, they didn't have surprises, I think we get actually excellent communication here, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that you change this, but.
Yeah, we get, I I think we get the 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 updates when, you know, the significant things happen so that we are not. Caught by surprise by social media or contacts from the press.
We also got really nice regular communication through communications, so it's for staff and board, I really appreciate.
Yeah, that that we, that was very helpful.
Yeah, so yeah, that was no, that wasn't a shame, that was just what he said, um and um. They're talking about um seniors and disability services there and youth, um and seniors combined in the vast of the township. Um OPRF, um that it's a hundred and fifty anniversary, so um and they're in the midst of their end of year transition right now, or it could be on Saturday. Um and let's see. Um, oh, and then there was a discussion of the um the pool and whether the pool at OPRF could be come. Community use, and a lot of discussion was around the fact that a lot of demand on the pool, um there's a lot from OPRF. Like the classes, the number of classes, the number of um teens that are in there that, and actually they're looking at it, they're doing a whole survey to see if there's a way that makes sense. But more and more they look at it, um the more it seems like the community needs its own um available wall, so um. And the market street has been doing a lot of surveying um and meetings around it. Um and that's really all, we, like I said, we had kind of a still improve there, so um that's all there is. From I go, but I I'm pleased with the direction that I go is taking this year compared to the last few years, previous years, I think, for and for getting um. More collaborative and um and forward looking and more minded about what it, what it means to to come together. Um and not just kind of redoing the same thing that's been done, because that's the way that it's been done, so. That's it, right up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh Congress did not meet our last meeting, since our last meeting is next week or in two weeks, next week. Next week, next week, yeah. All right, and then planning green?
Planning green that uh we Thursday last week. And uh Matt gave a very nice presentation about what the library did in April, um Christine was not able to try to say, I don't know why, but uh. Um the uh most interesting thing to me about the meeting was a presentation by the sustainability coordinator for Rush Hospital, Ian Hughes. And uh I volunteer at Shirley Ryan, a affiliate, and I see how much waste there is in hospitals. And when Ian Hughes was talking about the amount of just stuff, it was amazing. And he gives a really good presentation, which I think would be a lot of fun for the community to see. We started from by by the pounds, you know, of those terrible from the pharmacy.
Yeah.
They're, you know, single, you know, single use things, reuse furniture, it was really, really an interesting presentation and uh. And I think other hospitals didn't really think about this, because I've been talking to nurses and and janitors and other places and. They don't think of all the stuff they throw away, so. It was a good planning meeting and uh library got good credit for all the stuff they got in April, and Matt did a really nice job, so thank you, man.
Thank you, Ted. Uh president of the library?
Um president of the library met last Monday, I was actually working and not able to attend. Um I know Suzie, you attended, if you don't mind, I would like to share, I did review the minutes and I kind of got very excited when I read the treasurer's report. That they are now officially a nonprofit again, um which is really great and um that we have, or they have twenty eight thousand four hundred twenty three. And ninety three dollars and cents uh in their checking account. And uh forty thousand seven hundred four dollars and fifteen cents of the money in our account, which is great. Um they are gearing up for the book fair, I don't want to steal your thunder, Suzie, I know that you've been really involved in that. So I don't know if you.
No, it's really the bestest thing, which I support, yeah, but the big news was that they agreed to fund. Most, the majority of our ask, that's awesome, so, um there was some issues in checks the last day, but a trap, well, probably won't.
I apologize, I probably should have, that probably was the more important thing, I was really excited about the five oh one C three, very excited that they have.
That's, that's a good, well, I think, I want to get theirs.
And and of my expertise.
Well, then we can go on to new business, uh we had a little jab at the presentation, the next will be our country youth engagement I G A. Um. This is from a township, this is their youth engagement that you, that they, you, they uh send us monthly reports on. Uh from them, they, we have been engaged with them for as long as I've been on the board before. Um this has been a really uh uh beneficial partnership, I think. Um historically between us and the and the shared work that we do, um it is now up for renewal. Um and it goes, it's a every two years, um. So are there any?
Is it updated at all in terms of like current needs or is it, is it the same as two thousand?
No, it's been updated, it's. Cause they, they, like, the the scope and their approach to the work has has adapted and evolved over time.
That's okay.
Um and so this is, this is, this is reflective of their, of what they are currently. Uh what what they are currently working, but.
Mm hmm. Yeah, some chest change, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
It almost seems like it's spoken here, a call for one government entity here, or the other one, but.
It is, it is.
The government, it's not a problem for the others.
It is, it's, the tax money is all coming from the same goal, I think it's, it's Ted, so.
Okay.
Um because we are co-termists.
Yeah.
Um but I think there is uh a a benefit to the message that we are in collaboration with them and they're all. You know, there are ways that we can cooperate with them via, that we can, you know, share information. That is enabled by the I J that would otherwise make be more difficult, so.
Yeah.
And I agree with all of that, I always have to raise it. And.
Okay.
I um.
And if I raise, then I really want to rewrite this to get rid of the titles. You should volunteer your.
No, no, no.
Um it does, it does sound like you, uh I remember when we were having, um it was a couple of years ago. When I think we were still sort of meeting online, that we had conversations with about how. Um I think the consortium, no, the the library consortium in Illinois, by being part of it. You know, there's like remote programming, the smaller. Smaller libraries not in the Chicago.
The larger, the larger, yeah.
Yeah, are are able to have access to like, to programming that they would not be able to manage themselves, so I think that. To me, that's what this sounds like, I think is that there are certain, that there's a way that they're particularly. There's a way that the intergovernmental aspect of it can particularly serve youth engagement that. Is more than the some of its parts, more than we'll be able to do in some of its parts.
Yeah.
One, that's what taxpayers are asking for all the time, too, is is that we, you know, collaborate.
Yeah.
Together, you know, share, so, yeah, so we have a motion on the second.
Yeah.
And questions and discussion.
And if discussion is concluded, is uh all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those who vote same age, any extensions, it is approved. Go forward, go forward with tonight's, I'll send a hard copy.
Um the, I'd ask someone to include in the document, but it will actually be done inside once all the.
Perfect.
Agencies included, so if our patients read, we may not vote to approve, so they just want to make sure the right people are on the document.
Krista?
Yep.
Thank you. And now on to our executive directors' uh search for nominations. Um we already did approve the minutes um of the meeting, uh but there. I will, uh, let the the chair of the the value vision committee uh kick something.
All right, well, we had eight um proposals that were reviewed and we reviewed them in a rubric form, which I know was not Ted's favorite. But I think that ultimately, even though we had different ways of approaching, I felt there were really like, there were two really standout. Proposals, there were two that we felt we could kind of go either way, um but ultimately we thought that in the interest of. Resources and focus that we move forward with the two top um. Top proposals that we all read upon, which was Hoya and Hola, there was a reference trap, only two of the. Six references responded, but I actually felt pretty comfortable with with what that reference chart showed. One each, because it wasn't like, well, nobody bothered with one, you know, we had one room each. And the reality is a lot of people don't always respond to reference charts, and it is just kind of a sniff test. For me, and so I feel comfortable moving forward with talking about um these proposals. Yeah, we did have a um Excel document that I, I'm sorry, I meant to send uh around to everyone. I can share it on screen if you would like to review it, or we can send it around uh following the session. But it does document why we selected each um particular proposal, why we had concerns about. The proposals we had concerns in, and you know, if if we do have vendors that are concerned about, well, why, why work we selected? You know, we can kind of go over those concerns with the vendor, I I guess it would be me, who would go over the concerns. Um but I I'm happy to answer questions, I I would sue you so much, Ted and Suzanne. Um I'm also happy to share this, but she, um which.
If you did.
Yeah, let me do that, right, just that part of references. Yeah, yeah, let me do that right now, I'm sorry about that, I was traveling for work, I just.
Well, I'll do it.
Okay.
I know, I came out with a pink hat, so it's been happy I didn't share that.
I'm sorry.
I also have to help.
I'm sorry, cool, let's say yes, it's slim, I'm sorry.
We don't.
That's okay.
We can take the executive. We can take the executive section.
Yeah.
The executive section is for those things that come along, big guys. Yeah.
Um, so. I, I'm really grateful for the three of you.
Yes, thank you.
I wish that you did, um, reviewing that and discussing it, uh, I am comfortable, you, you know, following your recommendation. Um. I sent out, uh, a Google poll for, uh, the discussion I had in Maya. Was, um, after, and, and, and I also spoke with Suzie about. About how, you know, what are the next steps with however many we choose to proceed with. Um, would be a, um, a closed session. Meeting with each vendor, each, each panelist vendor that we choose to engage with. Um. Be with, prepare a series of questions, uh, that both would be asked. And they would have a chance to ask questions of the board. Uh, in those both sessions, and the, and the intent of having a closed session would be so that. The whoever is the vendor that goes second doesn't have the opportunity to hear the questions in advance. And prepare in a way that the first vendor did not get to, uh, again, check with the attorney. Uh, with, as, as Lee, and he said, we, we are, that is a permissible use of closed session. Uh, when it comes to, um, contracts. Um, to evaluate, uh, for, for those purposes. You know. It, it, it is, it is permissible for us to do that, um, because I wanted to run that by him before. Uh, but I think that was Suzie's recommendation to me saying, let's make sure we can do that before we, before we commit to it. Um, and so it is, and so, uh. The, the, the idea would be to have two. Closed session meetings in June. Um, I did send out a Google, I don't have to decide those tonight, but, um. You know, if you ever could get that this week. And begin to schedule with those, uh, for that.
Yeah, right, just for clarity, two close sessions in June for us to create the. The questions or for us to do the interviews?
To do the interviews.
Okay, because you started with like June third, not June third.
Right. But that's all we're getting.
I'm just looking.
No, I can.
For a gal, um.
Yeah.
Well, we also have to see.
My, I, oh, today, I'm giving my. Two cents about why we made the decisions that we did.
Yeah, I mean, would it be helpful also if I shared, um, my, the, uh.
Well, we're going to share everything with, with everybody, but.
Okay.
But, uh. It was very clear to, to me that the, the two people, the two firms that we chose were above. All the others for, for any reasons. Um, I was shocked at what the fees were being for them. I mean, it really was so much more than it was two years ago, but that really surprised me. But that was true, pretty much true of all the proposals, really, really high. Um, the two proposals that we chose to present to the board. Um, one is an established firm that will also do as part of that. Close to fifty thousand dollars, a little staff survey. As well as looking at executive search, and that was a real big positive thing for me.
Mm hmm.
Um, the positive for the other firm that we're, uh, uh, looking at is, it's a boutique firm. Uh, based here in Chicago, but they really went to a lot of trouble to understand what was going on at our library here in Oak Park. And it was very, very strong in that way, so two very different. Different companies. And, uh, as we go forward, I have no problem with, like, rejecting all the other six.
Yeah.
But, uh, so that's, those are, that's my two cents.
Yeah.
Is, is that fair?
Yeah, I think that, that, um, I think they both excel, yeah, they look at their understanding, their, the work that they put into the. The, um, proposal and their understanding of Oak Park, um, surrounding areas and specific to Oak Park Library. That was the, the really, um. That, that stood out for both of them, uh, and it was interesting that we all kind of. Came at how we were going to talk about them differently.
Yes.
But we all had the same conclusions separately.
Yeah.
So, yeah, like, you know, I was.
Yeah, then.
Wanted it till I put it time. And then he knows, like, at the beginning.
He's like, it's inviting, I lose those two favorites, yeah.
Um, and Maya was all numbers, and I was all words, you know, we all. Uh, so we had, you know, we had a different approach individually, you know, we came out of the book, but we had, we were. You know, very, very much on the same page.
Yeah.
Word, right?
Yeah.
So, which was, I was happy to see that, because I think we have different perspectives.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing, my experience has been with these seeds is general, gen- generally. There are just those proposals that despite different people's training and background, et cetera, like. They're just a really solid proposal, and there are those that are like, you know, they're fine, but they just, they're not quite perfect, and the ones that are just. Miss the mark, miss the mark, um, and I feel like that kind of comes across. No matter who is reviewing and, and doing that analysis, but it's really important to get the, the different perspectives.
Mm hmm.
And we'll go back to over the background, Martin said that they will tell us finding chief executive office.
Yeah, that's.
Perhaps AI might have been involved in one of them.
Yeah, there's a, there is.
Wow.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm, I'm glad we can be a tough case for them, um, given that.
But one of us, the two that we, that we, we, I felt really encouraged for going. That everybody had some, you know, sort of good options.
Uh.
Even with A S, I'm sorry, but like, our, uh, our colleague who was listening was building. Um, proposals from companies that do student management systems, so like all, all the stuff, and there was one. It was going to be entirely A I, they were starting from A I, recommending.
Going after the proposal of process.
Yeah, like recommending what, and you know, the, that. They were recommending that the actual student. It, like, everything, registration advice, counseling advice, what classes to take. All of that would be. In a, in a, in a, in a.
Yeah, I'm glad our, my office, uh, uh, chief, chief of county officer, head of cybersecurity is like. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna keep off on A I for a while.
Yeah.
For growing reasons, under some obligations, well, like, you know, I don't know. Office, um, I mean, we're, we use some stuff with like language transition, but that's it, um, what we've been doing with the sheet when language translation.
Sure.
Around, um, with that being said, uh, is there a motion to accept the, the. The evaluation committee's recommendations and bring, uh, and schedule meetings with Koya and Alma?
Yeah. That's just me, and I also second.
We can, we can second.
Are we, are we able to second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
You can second.
And I second.
Uh, don't, don't believe the, the, the chair does not make motions or seconds. Um. It was, I think more passes, um, and for the discussion. There are enough, I wasn't there, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, it is accepted, uh. Everyone try and get the, the Google poll, um, I think Ted and Virginia, uh, did it earlier.
I just did it.
You did, thank you, um, if we can get that and we can get some, and I will take those dates and I can reach out to the point of contacts in those bits to. And I'll coordinate with, uh, Suzie and the, uh, those, uh, dates, um.
Is the hope to get, try and get dates that are kind of close to each other to be different down there?
Yeah, I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna, it, I'm gonna look at whatever reason ability is, you know, it's possible that it's all, it's gonna be six or seven.
Yeah.
You know, in, on, on, on a date, and, and it's just a matter of looking at the calendar, what is. What's gonna get the most people moving at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
You can line up just. That, uh, the firms that have submitted but are not approved, that would, wouldn't reach out to them. That we don't just give them that, that dear John letter, as I say, but we just try to find a way that, that.
So if you want to, I already had one reach out to him saying, have you made a decision? Yeah, so did you want me to respond? Do you want to respond?
I mean, I was, I was in a, I was in a draft sort of a, a general letter, and then also, you know, include my contact information. As, as, as the, as a chair of the E C, um, which is that they do, if they do want feedback, they do want to talk about anything, I. I do want to have them, I do want to sit down with them, so.
I, I mean, that, that's, that has always been the process that I have, I have done as, um, as chief of county officer, so I will continue to.
That's the thing, yeah.
And you've been rejected in the past, I was like, to you. Well, that was the thing, but when I was at the permanent resources, when we had grants. I think we would offer that opportunity to speak with the people who weren't selected. As to why their proposals didn't make it, you know, and what they can do to improve it for next time. And I, and, and these were all small community groups, um, a lot of them in Bronzville and the South Side. In, in ideological, you know, you know, devastated areas, and so it was like, they were coming back the next time, and they get it. You know, they, they took it, they wanted it, and I, I believe that that is a really good way to engage those, so. With that said, we will now move into closed session, uh, is there a motion to enter closed session to discuss, um, employment compensation, discipline. Performance or dismissal of specific employees?
Yes, there is a motion, so.
Is there?
Second.
We will need a roll call for this.
Oh. Who's among the who's here, right?
Yes.
I was doing the Google poll, sorry. Trustee Foss.
Oh, yeah.
Trustee. General.
That was your point, thank you.
Wait, that's quite that.
First name, trustee, go ahead. Trustee, there are gases here, trustee.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, they will turn off the recording devices and exit Zoom.